I will call a regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen to order at 7:30. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Patricia Piatu. Alderman Wilshire will lead us in the Pledge of the Flag.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us up with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the clerk please call a roll?
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Alderman Gidge.
Here.
Alderman Harriet Gathwright. Alderman Dowd.
Present.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Laws. Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Karen.
Here.
Alderman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Malisey Gola.
Present.
Alderman Tenza.
Present.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderman McCarthy.
Present.
We have 13 members present.
Also present is Honor Mayor James Donjes, Corporation Counsel Stephen Bolton. Does the mayor wish to address the board?
Yes, Mr. President. So tonight we have the Red Sox playing the Yankees, so I will not filibuster as you have accused me of doing in the past. I see that R-18066 is going to be referred back to committee. That I totally support, sending that back to committee. In terms of things that I think are coming up very soon, we should try to, well, at least take note of and possibly attend. We do have the Art Walk, downtown Art Walk, both Friday, excuse me, Saturday and Sunday of this weekend. That is a great opportunity to see a lot of the artistic talent that we have in Nashua at the various studios around town. I know that Alderman Gidge will be present probably throughout, and it's been a great opportunity in the past to get to know some of the artists, so I hope anybody who is interested can attend. We also have the farmer's market in the downtown indoor farmer's market, starting on October 21st at, on Main Street at the former Alex Building. That, we have quite a few vendors, so that should go pretty well. Again, that's starting on the 21st. The paving, as you've seen, is well underway. We are pushing to try to complete some of the big streets before the end of the season. Concourse Street has begun with the first coat, and the second coat will be soon. Kinsley Street, we are still working with the utilities to make sure all the utility work is done before we pave. There was a water main break today, tonight, which has closed Kinsley Street. I hope that doesn't result in any further delay, but Public Works is promising me that they can get Kinsley Street done by early November. So let's keep our fingers crossed there. And finally, Mr. President, I think at least one of our new appointees, maybe more, is going to be sworn in tonight. I'd like to thank everybody who's agreeing and to serve and volunteering to serve on our various boards and commissions. We really need your help. Your involvement is very important, and everybody appreciates it, so thank you very much. In any event, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Any responses to the remarks of the mayor? Recognition period.
There is none.
Reading of the minutes of previous meetings. If there are no objections, the minutes of the Board of Aldermen meetings of September 25th, 2018, and October 2nd, 2018, will be accepted and placed on file, and the readings will be suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons?
Communication from J. Bradford Westgate Esquire relative to the Springs, a 62-plus condominium community at 699 701 West Hollis Street, petition for waiver of school impact fees.
If there are no objections, the petition will be accepted, placed on file, and referred to the Planning and Economic Development Committee, the Nashua City Planning Board, and the administrative officer. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. Two people have signed up. Nick Dahl. Ed Gilbertson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'm Ed Gilbertson of 121 Conant Road, and I'm going to be one of the petitioners, one of the two petitioners. The other one is Mike Fournier here from 119 Conant Road, and we're petitioning for a discontinuance of the right-of-way, of the unnecessary right-of-way on Conant Road, and it's for 119 and 121 Conant Road only. It's a partial discontinuance. There are four properties shown on your, on your plot that you have, and it's only for the two on the, if, on the right side, which have darker boundaries around them, and that's the, the two, those two properties join Katy Lane, so they're grouped together. So when the city discontinues its responsibilities for maintenance of that area or liability of that area, it's one continue, it's one clean break on the city's responsibilities, and that was a concern of Engineer Ducren, so we complied with that. This is revision six of this plan, and we, our surveyor has gotten together with the city surveyor, and every comment that, that the city has had has been incorporated, added in utilities, all of that. And it's been reviewed by the city staff, legal, and by the engineering staff for approval. It went to the planning board, and the planning board passed it and recommended approval. It went to the Committee on Infrastructure, and they recommended approval, and the city engineer endorsed it. And the city will benefit in a couple of ways. One is a minor amount of tax revenue, but some tax revenue, they release liability to the land, so we assume that. So the city no longer has liability there, and the maintenance responsibility, like snow removal on sidewalks, we pick up that. So that's, that's some of the areas where the city benefits. And I'd just like to also say, at the Committee on Infrastructure, I mentioned this, but I think it's worth mentioning again, we've had a tremendous amount of help from the city staff. We knew nothing coming into this about how to do one of these petitions. And so Alderman Jettie guided us a bit, and who to contact, and then Engineer Ducren and, and city surveyor Mark Jennings, they worked with our surveyor and worked with us. They explained everything. They worked us, we got all the revisions. You can really be proud of the quality, the engineering staff. I worked with a lot of engineers, and, and they're really outstanding quality, and you can be proud that they're on your, on your city. I am. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval?
There are none.
Come forward to the microphone, please.
My name is Patty Toupin. I'm from 123 Conant Road. I'm speaking on behalf, on regards of the discontinuance of Conant Road. I oppose it, the discontinuance, but I'm happy to share the reasons for when we, we get to that topic, if that's okay.
This is the last opportunity.
Is it, oh, is this the opportunity to talk about it? Okay. May I share, give out some photos?
Sure.
Could I ask you to, you need to speak also into the mic.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Patty Toupin from 123 Conant Road. Good evening. I'm here with my husband, Dan. We reside at 123 Conant Road. We have lived there for 27 years. We love Nashua and love our home. My husband and I have shared our personal story during prior committee meetings on this topic. However, for the benefit of the full Alderman body, please allow me to share once more. While we did not join the petition for discontinuance, while we oppose it, and our position based on everything we have learned during this process. First, we frankly never felt the need to officially go through this process. The portion of Conant Road moved in 2003 and has been like this for over 15 years now. We knew because of all the different utilities that exist on the properties, we would always have a relationship with the city and didn't feel incurring a significant cost of surveying the land to make it official would change anything. We now know differently. Some pertinent background information. 27 years ago, before the Maplewood and Katy Lane developments, the house that existed before was run down and unoccupied, during which time we maintained the area from our driveway to the telephone pole, which then was a combination of land and road by pruning the bushes and overgrowth, maintaining the land, and plowing snow off the street to allow safe delivery of the mail, and our safe exit and entrance from and to our driveway. Then in 2003, 15 years ago, Conant Road was moved as part of the Maplewood development, which gave the properties along Conant Road added frontage. The reason why we strongly oppose this discontinuance is where the property line separating our property and 121 Conant Road has been drawn. Based on the proposed plan, 121 Conant Road's footprint, as they use it today, would expand, and the footprint that we have cared for as if it was our own would shrink. The property disputed is the land to the right of ours next to our driveway, approximately 24 feet by 65 feet. Both 123 and 121 Conant Road observed the telephone pole and sign as boundaries. We've been maintaining the land as outlined in the pictures for over 15 uninterrupted years by mowing, seeding, fertilizing, watering, plowing, and the last three years maintaining a garden on it. There has never been a time that we didn't treat this land as our own. During the same period, approximately 15 years, our neighbors observed the same property separation, stopping the care of their land referencing both the telephone pole and sign as boundaries. There was an overlap very early on, however, though I don't recall the exact conversation, I do unequivocally remember the outcome, where the telephone pole and sign would be recognized as boundaries. This conversation occurred when the Gilbertsons were renting and never came up again anytime after that. We feel very strongly that the proposed property line moving in only arm's length from our driveway and primary use to our home does not keep us whole. The personal living space that we've always had would be diminished, and I know that's not the city's intent. We understand this is the last stop before final approval. We have learned a lot during this process. During the last meeting, Alderman O'Brien was more than generous, allowing both sides ample discussion time. My husband and I felt that the committee absolutely understood our position, but the question ultimately asked of us from the committee was, is there legal standing to support your position? Based on what we have learned recently, we believe there is. My husband and I have always, my husband and I were always under the assumption that the land belonged to the city, and because it belonged to the city, you cannot claim adverse possession. What was confirmed today in an email from Attorney Steve Bolton was generally speaking, in these quotations, generally speaking, the city does not own the property upon which the streets, roads, and sidewalks go over. Generally, the city has an easement over the property, and the property is owned by the abutting landowners on each side to the center line subject to the city's easement interest. This is information that we just gathered through this process. So knowing that, we believe we have a very strong case for adverse possession dating back to 1991, when we bought our home, which takes us way beyond the 20 years established, years to establish the required statutory period. The time period for adverse possession does not reset itself based on new owners, but the continuous usage of land. If adverse possession is successfully established, which we believe we have a compelling case, it would move the boundary line where we believe it should likely be. The pictures handed out show a few things. Page one shows how the land in question, the yellow box, and our land, 123 Conant Road, fits with one another given the configuration and maintenance use history. We also believe that shows the maintenance of land by the variance in lawn, lawn color. Page two shows the agreed-upon boundary lines, telephone pole and sign, but also where the proposed property line would be moved, the red dash line. As you can see, it's, it's no more than arm's length away from our main entrance. The trees 121 Conant Road planted in grass maintenance all stop at that telephone as well. Also, the prior owners of 121 Conant Road recognize these boundaries as well when they installed the sprinkler system, or the sprinkler placement would be very different, and more sprinkler heads would have been added to cover the 24 by 65-foot area. There is not one sprinkler head on that land in question. Page three is the Conant Road before it was moved. You can see our driveway and where our mailbox was prior to the move. Also, more importantly, you can see the shrubbery that exists close to our driveway and the dent that is cleared due to my husband's upkeep. Page four, the house and property in 1991 that existed before the development. Page five shows clearly the land gained and the persinthea and trimbushes and entire area maintained by my husband. Based on the testimony and clarification from the city's attorney, Steve Bolton, we would be basing our suit for adverse possession against the owners of 121 Conant Road. All we are respectfully asking is that we table this final decision to the next meeting so not to complicate the issue, allowing us time to obtain legal representation. We appreciate your time. Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval?
There are none.
Petitions?
Petition for street discontinuance portion of Conant Road.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to amend the petition for street discontinuance by replacing the proposed discontinuance plan with the amended plan submitted by the petitioners.
Motion is to amend the petition by replacing it with the proposed, with the amended plan submitted by the petitioners. Is there any discussion of that motion? Alderman Gidge?
Yes, I think we've, we've been talking about this, and this is, as you can see, there are two people over here who would like the land. One couple has cared for it for 27 years. The other couple also said they've cared for it. There's flower beds over there, it's part of a garden. They just can't seem to come together and divide it, and I understand it's a precedent to do that. You can't do that, literally. Legally, if the land is given up by the city, the petitioners, I believe, because of where they live, and, and the land did come from that house or that property before, they can get it. Having said that, having watched this mess, the city doesn't have to sell it. We don't have to sell it. And the fact of the matter is, or give it until some sort of an agreement is made. If you take a look at the pictures, you can see that I believe, oh, put a fence up, it's, what, four feet from their driveway, for 27 years they've cared for it. I understand it's a precedent to do something like this, but we don't have to sell it. And it's just awful, and it's, it's just a big argument, and it's not going to get any better if we give it or sell it or deed it over to anyone. So until they can agree, I would just say, we don't have to sell that land, and I don't think we should.
I'm going to ask Attorney Bolton to explain it, but we're not actually selling it. We're simply relinquishing the right-of-way claim that we have and giving back the property to its rightful owner. Can you elaborate on the process?
You're correct, Mr. President. It's not a question of the city selling it, selling the land, or giving the land, or deciding if someone has acquired it by adverse possession, or someone else has acquired it by deed. We've got no power to do any of those things. The city doesn't own the land. What the city has is a right to use that land for public travel, pedestrian and vehicular, and the other uses commonly made of roadways by municipalities, so laying sewer pipes and so forth. Utilities can use it as well for overhead wires or underground pipes and conduits. And to the extent they have the right to do that, we can't give their rights up either. Who owns the land may be a subject of dispute between these two families. We don't have the authority, the city does not have the authority to decide that dispute. The Superior Court does. Superior Court is not hindered in any way by you passing the petition or not passing the petition. All this petition is asking you to do is give up the city's right to use it as the roadway. And it's at least arguable that we don't need to use it as the roadway since we've moved the road over. The woman who spoke a few minutes ago is absolutely right. The term for adverse possession is 20 years, but there's more that has to be proven, and they have a right to go to court and attempt to prove that. I don't know if this helps you or not in determining what you wish to do, but the fact is, you are not granting anyone anything they don't already own, or taking anything they already own away from anyone, no matter which way you go on this.
Yes, I'd like, may I comment on that? I believe the people who will receive that parcel, you say it's theirs. The fact is, is that they did not own the property when that was used as a right-of-way. So if you look in those terms...
I beg to differ, Mr. Gidge. They have owned it since they owned the abutting property, since either one of these families purchased their interest in the abutting property. When they purchased that abutting property, they also got the fee interest in the road out to its then-center line.
Could I just, just one question? It's a little confusing for me. Okay, so they buy the property, so in a sense, we have the right-of-way, but it's their land.
Correct.
If we give up the right-of-way, it becomes completely their land.
Right. We have an easement interest over property that belongs to other people. If we give up that easement interest, obviously, we no longer have it, so that unburdens their property.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes, so Attorney Bolton, just for my understanding, so we've given up our easement, the property reverts back to the original, the, the owner of the property.
I wouldn't use the word reverts. I would say their property is now unburdened.
It becomes more usable for them. They now have the use of all of that property that we had the easement on. So by granting this petition, once that's done, if the Toupins at 123 want to do anything, they would then need to go to Superior Court. What they're requesting can't be done here.
Correct.
So, so really, nothing can happen to address their need here at the Board of Aldermen. And in fact, us granting the petition kind of paves the way for them to go to Superior Court with an attorney, because we can't do anything.
I would say it neither helps nor hurts.
Right.
It neither improves their case nor damages their case.
But they can't make their case here. We have no authority over that.
Right. This board cannot decide property rights.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Motion is to amend the petition.
May I just make, ask one more question of Corporation Counsel?
Alderman Tenza.
So regardless of this petition, I mean, these property disputes are difficult for neighbors, but the Toupins could have gone to Superior Court regardless of what we did, what we do with this, even, you know, they could, could have filed a petition a couple weeks ago, even though this right-of-way easement hasn't been lifted.
If their contention is that they've been adversely possessing this property for 27 years, they could have gone any time in the last seven years, and they still have the right to go. And that's not going to expire anytime soon either, as I, as I said. Whatever is done here this evening impedes no one and helps no one.
Any further discussion? The motion is to amend the petition with the amended plan submitted by the petitioners. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I oppose.
And the motion carries. Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion to grant the petition for street discontinuance as amended, and may I speak to my motion?
Please.
Mr. President, fellow colleagues on the board, this was a very tough one, okay? When I got into being an Alderman, I had the clear understanding that we're going to have to make some tough decisions. We all did, particularly those that sit in as chairmans of their particular committees. This was one of those such circumstances. I had clear knowledge that unfortunately, somebody was going to leave the meeting very disappointed, as was what the case. But I am proud to say that my committee, it is my opinion that my committee, and particularly my members of the committee, did do their diligence to sit down and to listen to what both petitioners had to say. Both petitioners were granted, I gave them very allotted leeway to make sure that they would be properly heard, and I think that this item was vetted well. So therefore, I come to tell this board that as far with the current law and procedures by what is under our domain as Alderman, and the fact of the duty of the Infrastructure Committee that did vote unanimously to approve this, I urge you to vote the same for this petition. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, every time I hear something with amendment, I think of Alderman Chassie. Could the Chairman of Infrastructure please explain what the amendment is for the general public so they know what changed?
I really don't have that clearly. Could Corporate Counsel assist me with that? Because this was a very complex issue, and we, there was tons of paperwork that we kind of meted through.
I believe the amendment is, instead of the discontinued portion extending further to the south on Conant Road, it's limited just to the two properties on one corner or the other corner of, I believe it's Cathy Drive.
Any further discussion? Alderman Jettie?
At the risk of complicating this further, the, the plan was also amended because the Gilbertson's surveyor, engineer, had originally drawn the line from, as you can see the picture that, that Mrs. Toupin provided. If you look at the blue line, so that you see a yellow box, and above the yellow box there's a corner of the blue line, where that blue line, that corner of the blue line is actually the property line separating the Gilbertson's property on the right from the Toupin's property on the left. The city engineer told the Gilbertson's surveyor that that line should be drawn perpendicular from that point, that, there's a, there's actually an iron pin there, from that point to the street. So the surveyor originally drew that line perpendicular to what is now Conant Road, the center line of what is now Conant Road. Mr. Ducren then asked him to amend it because, Mr. Ducren changed his opinion because the, the line from that iron pin separating the two properties should be drawn perpendicular to the center line of the old Conant Road, and then... to the center line of the old Conant Road, and then from the center line of the old Conant Road to the center line or edge of the new Conant Road, and the angle is somewhat altered. So the Gilbertson's engineer complied with the, Mr. Dukran's request to redraw the plan, and that is the amended plan that is now before us, which has been approved by the Planning Board and Mr. Dukran.
Further discussion? Alderman Lopez?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that it was that revision. Alderman O'Brien, and I have to give him a lot of credit for, for being bold enough to embrace the method we did it last time. He let everybody sit down and really hash it out, and I was particularly nervous, literally being between two neighbors on a situation like this. But he gave everybody a fair shot, and he did attempt the Solomon maneuver, you know, where apparently you cut a baby in half, and it's not allowed. Like, that was, according to the state guidelines, it has to be a perpendicular line. So we really did our, the best we could in trying to resolve this. Personally, it pains me, I know I have some residents in Ward Four who are still arguing over a fence, even though one of them moved away, and it's just really unfortunate to see neighbors, you know, coming to blows over, over property lines and valuations. It was my hope that we would be able to settle this, and one of the recommendations that, or opportunities that Engineer Dukran had pointed out is after, after this is settled, then the neighbors can absolutely sell their neighbor a chunk of the land that they want, that they've used, that they put flower beds on, and they have a basketball hoop on, and that kind of stuff. So I honestly think, at this point, we've, we're, we really need to just do our role as Aldermen, and either grant the petition or not grant it. Preferably, I'd refer to grant it, because then at least somebody's getting what they're looking for, and then let the courts do what they're supposed to do.
Alderman Gidge?
To Mr. Bolton, do we have to give them, do we have to give up the easement?
You do not have to approve this petition, no. You can approve it or not, approve it as you will.
But that's not, my question is, do we have to give up the easement? Is that, or are you just basing it on what?
Let me put it this way, discontinuing a street and giving up the easement are two ways of saying the same thing.
Okay. And I would like to say one thing is that Mr. O'Brien, Alderman, and Representative did give everyone a chance, and I want to thank you, and I will be voting with Alderman O'Brien. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Alderman Dowd?
I was going to say, doing the discontinuance or not doing the discontinuance doesn't change the property lines. So if there's a dispute on the property lines, it would hold whether they, we pass this or not pass this, has nothing to do... When you grant their easements over multiple properties, you could have an easement for power lines. If they give up the right for the easement of the power lines, then you, they no longer have a right to put power lines through your property. In this case, we have no longer, no longer a right to put a road there, but it doesn't change the property line location one iota.
Further discussion? If not, the motion is for, to grant the petition for street discontinuance as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections?
To the Honorable Lord of Aldermen, I have this day appointed Brian Law, 78 Concord Street, Nashua, to the Airport Authority for a term to expire August 31, 2023. I have this day appointed Sylvia Gale, 4 Clergy Circle, Nashua, to the Cultural Connections Committee for a term to expire February 28, 2021. I have this day appointed James E. Pyle, 14 Elston Circle, Nashua, to the Environment and Energy Committee for a term to expire October 31, 2021. I have this day appointed Greg Andrew Scovitch, 3 Caraway Lane, Nashua, to the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee for a term to expire June 30, 2020. I have this day appointed Michael Watts, 10 Royal Crest Drive, Number 10, Nashua, to the Mine Falls Park Advisory Committee for a term to expire October 31, 2021. I have this day appointed Tina Cassidy, 36 Arlington Street, Nashua, to the Nashua Arts Commission for a term to expire September 1, 2021. I have this day appointed Lindsay Rinaldi, 705 Belmont Street in Belmont Mouse, to the Nashua Arts Commission for a term to expire April 1, 2021. I have this day appointed Maggie Harper, 3 Taft Street, Nashua, to the Nashua City Planning Board for a term to expire March 31, 2020. And I have this day appointed A. John J. Minkra, 13 Mount Pleasant Street, Nashua, to the Zoning Board of Adjustment for an alternate position for a term to expire September 11, 2020. In respect to requests, the appointments be confirmed.
If there are no objections, the appointments by the mayor will be accepted as read and referred to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, if there are no objections, the report of the September 26, 2018 Committee on Infrastructure will be accepted and placed on file. If there are no objections, the report of the October 1, 2018 Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee will be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
Hunt Memorial Building Board of Trustees.
If there are no objections, Terry Romano, 52 Main Street, Nashua, is duly appointed to the Hunt Memorial Board of Trustees for a term to expire September 30, 2023. She is unable to attend and will be sworn in at a later date.
Tax Increment Financing Advisory Board.
If there are no objections, Eric Drewart, 52 Main Street in Nashua, Arthur Spilius, 15 Technology Way, Nashua, Director Tim Cummings, Treasurer David G. Fredette, and Director Sarah Marchand are duly appointed to the Tax Increment Finance Advisory Board for terms to expire September 30, 2019. Would any of those individuals who are present come forward for the oath of office?
If you're interested, you sound rich, if you will, to the best of your abilities, fulfill all the duties, and come upon you as a member of the Tax Increment Financing and Financing Board. We agree with the rules and regulations of the city charter and the statute of laws of the state of New Hampshire.
Absolutely. Good man.
Appointments by the President of the Board of Aldermen?
Auditorium Commission.
If there are no objections, John Franzini of 12, 13 Lutheran Drive, Nashua, and John McCallister of 257 Wheeler Road in Hollis are duly reappointed to the Auditorium Commission for terms to expire December 31, 2020. Are either of those individuals here? They will be sworn in on a later date. Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of Resolution 18-066 relative to addressing possible inequities and sick leave policy for certain unfacilitated employees.
Alderman Wilshire?
Thank you. I move to rerefer Resolution 18066 to Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Motion is to rerefer R. 1866 to the Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee. Is there any discussion? Alderman Lopez?
I think it's very gracious of Alderman Wilshire to rerefer it to committee. As we just found out, there's a lot of work that gets done on those committees, and we do have some pretty detailed conversations about issues before bringing them back to the Board of Aldermen. And I think that it was a very unfortunate situation, having an email sent out which cast a specific perception of that, because I feel like it undermines the work that we do in the committee. So while I understand the reasoning behind taking another look at it and making sure that everybody's happy moving forward, I also think it's important to remember that the work that the committees do is important, and our role as Aldermen is an important part of that.
Further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries in R. 1866 is referred to Personnel and Administrative Affairs Committee.
Second reading of Resolution 18-073 proposing an amendment to the city charter relative to filling vacancies on elected boards by majority vote of the remaining members of that board.
Alderman Kelly?
Yeah, I move that R. 18073 is necessary and that it be tabled at the full board level pending the scheduling of a public hearing.
Motion is that R. 1873 is necessary and that it be tabled at the full board level pending the scheduling of a public hearing. Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Jenny?
Point of order, I think, or at least a question. So does that mean that we are approving this and, and that it'll be scheduled for a public hearing at some future date, but the, the details of it are, are what they are and cannot be changed later? Or is there, you know, can, can amendments be made to it? I'm not sure.
Amendments can in fact be made to it later on. There, it's a two-step process for charter change. There needs to be a finding that the change is necessary by the board, and then a public hearing, and then approval of the change and putting it on the ballot. We have lots of time to deal with this, since it won't appear on the ballot until a year from November at the next municipal election, so...
Okay, so could I follow up? So the, the amendment to the city charter as it appears now can, can, isn't necessarily what is going to be presented to the voters in November of 2019. It could be changed.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez?
I do think this is necessary, and if the voters don't agree, that's fine, but I think we at least need to raise the point, because we spent a lot of money on municipal elections, we strained our own staff, we had a lot of volunteers working for a low voter turnout. So I think it's, we at least need to raise the question of can we do this better?
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries in R. 1873 is tabled before the full board.
Second reading of Resolution 18-074 authorizing the city to enter into a short-term real property lease agreement for 44 Broad Street.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18074.
Motion is for final passage of R. 1870, or R. 1874. Discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and R. 1874 is adopted.
Second reading of Resolution 18-083 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of $1,105,000 from the United States Department of Transportation, Federal Transit Administration, and $97,500 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation into transit grant activity, transit capital outlay for the purchase, purchase of two electric hybrid buses.
Alderman Karen?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 18-083. May I speak on?
Motion is for final passage of R. 1883.
Thank you. The Human Affairs Committee met yesterday, Director Marchand came in and spoke to us about the two hybrid buses. This is time sensitive. It's going to take almost a year to get those built. They will be discontinuing one trolley, and they will keep the other one for special occasions, but Alderman Marchand thinks this is going to be great for the city, because it'll be used within the city compounds. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And R. 1883 is adopted. Unfinished business ordinances?
Second reading of Ordinance 18-022 authorizing free holiday parking at meters in Zone 3, which includes Elm Street and High Street parking garages from December 10, 2018 through January 4, 2019.
Alderman Gidge?
Mr. President, a final passage for this, free parking for the holidays on 018022, please.
Motion is for final passage of O. 1822. Is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries and O. 1822 is adopted.
Second reading of Ordinance 18-023 changing the management department, managing department and ordinances regarding parking.
Alderman Karen?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O. 18-023.
Motion is for final passage of O. 1823. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and O. 1823 is adopted.
Second reading of Ordinance 18-024 moving the location of a yield sign at the intersection of Walnut Street and Central Street.
Alderman Lopez?
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O. 18024.
Motion is for final passage of O. 1824. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and O. 1824 is adopted.
Second reading of Ordinance 18-028 allowing permitted overnight on-street parking indefinitely on those streets where it is temporarily permitted.
Alderman O'Brien?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of 018028.
Motion is for final passage of O. 1828. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and O. 1828 is adopted. New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution 18-084 approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the National Board of Education and the National Association of School Administrators and Supervisors, American Federation of School Administrators, AFL-CIO, from July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2019, and related transfers.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Wilshire, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Lizzie Golia, Alderman Lopez, and Alderman Cle. And R. 1884 will be assigned to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution 18-085 authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed the amount of $650,000 for the purchase of two automated refuse trucks.
Additional sponsors, Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Lizzie Golia, Alderman Cle, and Alderman Dowd. Did I miss anybody? If there are no objections, the first reading of R. 1885 will be accepted. It'll be assigned to the Budget Review Committee and the Board of Public Works, and a public hearing will be scheduled for Monday, October 22, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution 18-086 relative to the acceptance and appropriation of additional $54,709.64 from the State of New Hampshire Department of Transportation, Transportation Alternative Program Funds, into community development grant activity path and pedestrian bridge.
Additional sponsors, Alderman Wilshire, Alderman Dowd, Alderman Cle, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Karen, Alderman Lizzie Golia, Alderman Tenza, Alderman Schmidt, and Alderman O'Brien. And R. 1886 will be assigned to the Human Affairs Committee. New business ordinances?
There are none.
Period for general public comment. No one has signed up. Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen, I'll start on this side. Alderman Gidge, Alderman Wilshire.
Go Sox. That's all I have.
Alderman Gidge?
The mayor did mention this Saturday and Sunday, the art walk, and people have to understand that obviously art is important, but art also makes money. The research that we have done on the committee in Concord is that for every dollar spent for the arts, there's a $10 return. So here's an opportunity, not only to support the arts, but to support the city financially, and also to get something that's absolutely original, that you may either read, send as a card, put on your wall. So please, this Saturday and Sunday, please, the art walk here in Nashua. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd?
Yeah, just two things. You get a chance to be downtown a lot these days, and many of the parking meters, the LEDs can't be read. You put money in and you have no idea what the time is on the meter. And for the automatic, where you put the money in and get a slip to put on your dash, it's taking forever for the receipt to come out of the machine. I had a person in front of me tonight that almost walked away and said, "Thing's not working." And then I put my money in, and it took several minutes for it to come out. I don't know what's wrong with them, but I think somebody needs to look into it.
Additional comments? Alderman Lopez? Alderman Lopez?
Also on the Art Walk, I typically enjoy it, but I also see a lot of parents that are trying to enjoy it with their kids, and it's sort of like a lot of, a lot of walking around for kids. So Winnie the Pooh is also going to be at the, being performed by the Peacock players, so you can kind of get a break. And then also this weekend, I believe the Rotary is doing their duck race, so.
Alderwoman, Alderwoman Kelly?
That's okay, that's all. Thank you. I just wanted to thank the Board for passing the legislation to bring the hybrid buses as a member of the EE Committee. It'll start to move us towards our goals, and I don't know if anyone saw the recent article, that in 10 years, it could be catastrophic if we don't start looking at stuff, so I think that's really important. I wanted to highlight holiday shopping. I'm glad that we passed that as well, and I want to see people come downtown, because we have an incredible wealth of places to go and get really unique gifts as you're, as you're going through your holiday shopping. And I would be remiss if I said that I, if I didn't bring up that I'm a little disappointed in the re-referral of R. 18066. We did spend a lot of time in committee talking about this. I think there was some public confusion on this, and I think that, I look forward to being able to clarify that, but these people have been waiting a very long time for us to make a decision on this, and I think it's, that they deserve a fairly timely resolution of it. Thank you.
Alderwoman Melissa Golia?
Yes, I would just like to elaborate about Rotary West Duck Race, which is happening on Saturday. As of Sunday, they still had some of their flock that was up for adoption, and you can go online to make adoptions, and my understanding is, any ducks that are not adopted as of Saturday morning will be available for adoption prior to the race. And I think it's important for the public to know that the proceeds from this event does not go to Rotary West, but they in fact use it to provide funds to nonprofits within the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm, I'm looking forward to our first chicken race coming up in the future.
I refrained from even making reference to clucking or quacking.
Thank you.
Alderman Tenza?
Thank you. And just to follow up on what Alderman Dowd was saying, I mean, I would commend the city on the new pay-by-phone parking initiative, the new app you can download. I know that it has saved me tremendously on parking tickets. If you are caught up, continue shopping or doing anything else downtown, you can refill your parking meter just on your phone. The city collects the parking fees. It's not going to collect as many parking tickets from me next year when I pay my, but it's a, it's a good thing, and it's a, it's a nice benefit, additional benefit for folks who are going downtown to have.
Any other comments? It's occurred to me, by the way, I know some members of the Board have gotten calls about the elderly exemption, and whether we were going to adjust it after the reassessment. And it occurs to me that because of the reassessment, there is actually a substantially higher burden on people who had a large piece of their assessment waived by the exemption, and a fairly small percentage increase can yield a fairly large percentage increase in, in the part of the assessment that they're paying taxes on. So I have, I will be asking to look at that. I think it seems like the most straightforward thing to do is to increase the exemptions by the average percentage of the, of the, of the assessment changes. So we'll take a look at what the assessment is, what the impact of that is, if anybody's interested in joining and sponsoring that. Alderwoman Melissa Golia?
Yes, Alderman McCarthy, you and I discussed this over the weekend, and I would certainly be willing to join you in sponsoring that. But as we discussed also, there are some things around senior exemption and what is exempt, what can be and cannot be exempted that are governed by state law. And so I just think it's important that those individuals running for seats up in Concord be aware of that, and I know for the past four years, when I've been questioned about it, I have told the homeowner, "Please ask that question of whoever's running for state rep in your ward." So I think it's something that we need to seriously look at up in Concord. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee announcements? No? Alderwoman Melissa Golia?
PEDC next Tuesday, 7:00 PM here in the chamber. Thank you.
Is there a motion? Alderwoman Wilshire?
Move to adjourn.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:25.